Good evening. This is a call to order for the February 10th, 2025 City Canal Winchester Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Time is seven o'clock PM. Mr. Deeds, rule call, please.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Present.
Ms. McDonald?
Here.
Mr. Deeds?
Here.
And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Here.
Okay. Motion to, just, motion to, yeah.
Excuse.
Excuse. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie and Ms. Gooden.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Rule call.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Now I'll need approval of our December 9th minutes. There was not a meeting in January, so we'd be approving December 9th, 2024 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, my move is we approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Willenthaler, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Rule call, please.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Now it's time for public comment for items that are not on our agenda this evening. So if there's an item that you wish to speak to the commission about for an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time. All right. If you'll be speaking with us this evening, if there's any chance you'll speak to the commission, whether you're an applicant or a member of the public, would you please stand, if you're able, raise your right hand and take an oath? If there's any chance you'd speak to us this evening. All right. Do you swear to be truthful in the testimony you give and tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. I would also let those in attendance this evening know that there are five commissioners here this evening. Two of us, or two are not here. So by city statute, if we take a vote on any application, there has to be four positive votes for the motion to carry. So for example, if we vote three to two, three positive votes, two negative votes, then that motion would not carry. So I just always put that out there when there's a couple people not here. Now I need a motion from one of the trustee, or one of the commissioners to move to executive session for election of 2025 officers.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Rule call, please.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Timeout, 7:04 PM.
Yeah, they just went out together.
Yeah, so this is the first meeting of the year, so they need to elect who's going to be president, vice president, and secretary for the commission. So they'll be back in like 30 seconds to two minutes, sort of thing. It doesn't take long.
a vote for each chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. So I'll need a motion for chairman for 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Joe Willenthaler for, I'm sorry, Joe Donahue for chair. Boy, I tell you, I just get a rule call and that's it.
Second.
All right. So second, motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Paulsgrove. Rule call, please.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion for vice chairman, for women.
I'd like to nominate Ms. McDonald for vice chair.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Deeds, second by Mr. Willenthaler. Rule call, please.
All right. Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Rick Deeds for secretary?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Paulsgrove, second by Mr. Willenthaler. Rule call, please.
Mr. Willenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds, yes. And Mr. Paulsgrove?
Yes.
All right. So election of 2025 officers is complete. Mr. Donahue, chairman, Ms. McDonald, vice chairman, and Mr. Deeds will remain as secretary. And I'll now turn it over to staff for our first application.
Tonight's, two applications, ZM 25001 and PDP 25001. I'll discuss those in tandem. They are both regarding the 26 acres of property located on Hill Road. The first request is to rezone the property to a new planned residential district. That would be ZM 25001. And the second request is to approve the preliminary development plan and development text to approve 122 apartment dwelling units. That would be for plan, preliminary development plan, application 25001. The subject property is located on the east side of Hill Road. It is outlined on the screen. Properties to the, predominantly to the north and east are located in Violet Township. It consists of large lots, single-family homes. And then you can see here, kind of platted in the background, is the first phase of a new Miranda development that is taking place within Violet Township. To the south of subject property, this area in purple, that is zoned limited manufacturing and was located within the City Canal Winchester. And then located across the street on Hill Road of the subject property, a mix of large lots, single-family homes in the township. And then this section here that is platted is the Green Gate Cove neighborhood, which is a detached condo of development. This subject property, again, consists of 26.7 acres. The main parcel here, about 25 acres. The two subsequent parcels are right-of-way along Hill Road. The applicant's requesting to rezone this property, the existing context of the properties up on the screen here, it is apparent from the aerial up on the screen, but it is a agriculturally farmed field that does have a tree-lined perimeter boundaries to the east and the south. This subject property currently is zoned planned residential district. It was zoned in 2001 with Oregon's 52-01 for the Green Gate Piper development. This preliminary development plan, which is still active on the subject property, permits up to 44 detached condo units and an assisted living facility on the 25 acres. This zoning for the property is still valid. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property this evening. So again, up on the screen is what the existing zoning permits. The applicant's requesting to rezone for a 122 apartment dwelling unit project. This proposal is being requested as a planned residential district, as the applicant's looking to make some modifications to our strict multifamily zoning text for the project. Kind of run through what the preliminary plan is proposing this evening, as well as some context for the development. As you guys flip through my staff report, the gray boxes that are on page one and two, that's really just code background to give you guys some reference points for what a planned residential district requires. So feel free to reference that in your discussion this evening. Highlighted the sections that pertain specifically to a PRD for your review. But skipping to the analysis part on page two of my staff report, going through the permitted uses under this proposal, the applicant is requesting approval of the development text and preliminary plan for the maximum of 122 apartment dwellings. The applicant notes in their proposal that there'll be a series of permitted uses, such as the apartment dwelling units that will range from two-unit buildings as the smallest to six-unit buildings as the largest. These residential dwelling units will be combined with a clubhouse and outdoor recreational facilities. The applicant notes may consist of a playground, dog park, pickleball court. Some sort of recreational facility is required in the development text. A swimming pool has been noted to also be a permitted use, but is not specifically defined as being required. When looking at the kind of site plan, this area boxed out on my screen shows the concepts for that clubhouse component. Architecturally, what it'll look like on the front, as well as the applicant's submittal for the floor plan, just to give you an idea of the size of it and kind of what amenities go inside that, that physical structure. Within this boxed-in area is also the exterior amenities. Applicant notes, such as the pool, they're showing a pickleball court, a dog park, playground. There's an onsite maintenance building that's detached, and a mailroom kiosk that's also detached. This site, size of the building as well, also shows some off-street parking to facilitate the traffic going to the mail using some of those amenities. We'll kind of talk about more parking-related items with the proposal here coming up. But that is what the applicant has proposed for permitted uses on the site. When looking at roadways, parking, and pedestrian connectivity, the development text that's been proposed shows internal roadways. They are to be private streets. It is noted they'll be maintained by the property owner and will feature two full access drives onto Hill Road. The first would be this one on the screen that will line up with Green Gate Boulevard directly across the street on Hill Road. The second full access point is to the north, that's a little over 500 feet to the north of the first. The plans are showing a five-foot wide sidewalk network that is on one side of the street. It is integrated to the street and within the development, meaning there's no tree lawn between, separating the sidewalk from the roadway. The applicant, again, is showing a sidewalk on one side of the internals of the development. And this concept plan that's up on the screen shows they'll be constructing a sidewalk along Hill Road. I mean, you can see in these kind of blow-up exhibits, as well as showing connection points from the units to Hill Road and the access drives to Hill Road. The development plan that is up on the screen does show five access points. However, the development text notes that a minimum of two is required. So just a little note for the commission that their plan is showing more than the text is committing them towards. When looking at the plan as well, the units that the applicant plans on constructing will feature a two-car attached garage for each unit, as well as two off-street driveway spaces between the garage and the street. The applicant has also noted in addition that 50 to 55 off-street parking spaces will be constructed throughout the property. Looking at the site plan, again, they're showing a cluster on the clubhouse, as well as some nodes of parking throughout the development. Some of the things the applicant has not discussed in this proposal is whether on-street parking would be permitted, some of those other additional parking elements. But they are noting that parking standards are in excess of the minimum our zoning code requires for a multifamily development. When looking at the landscaping and open space plan, the development text proposes 30% gross open space provided within the development. 20% minimum is required for a PRD, so the applicant is exceeding that minimum amount. With the open space, the applicant notes that the existing tree line buffer to the east and south will be maintained. They also note that the landscape requirements for this development shall conform to Chapter 1191 of the zoning code, which is our most up-to-date landscape section of our zoning code. The applicant has provided some illustrations here showing that they are going to screen the development from Hill Road per the screening requirements in our code, as well as some of the Violet Township overlay district requirements for street tree spacings. However, the applicant at this time has not provided a full landscape plan, showing that they have the intent to meet all Chapter 1191 that they're referencing. The preliminary development plan submittal does require a conceptual landscape plan, essentially laying out all the different requirements for the code, not necessarily in writing, showing they can meet them, but just showing visually that they have the capability of meeting them on their site plan and what those conceptual numbers for a number of plants, landscape beds, things like that would be. When looking at the architecture for the residential development, the applicant is showing a mix of building unit styles and colors. The color graphic on the right, each one of the squares represents the color pattern for that building on this concept plan, showing there is some variation on the style between the four schemes of building colors, color palettes. On the left-hand side of the screen here, the top is showing the color rendering the applicant provided for the units that will face Hill Road. These units are designed to be, the front of the building will face Hill Road, as well as the internal front of the building will face the internal streets. So this unit design is different for these buildings they're showing, these three buildings they're showing than the rest. So it's something staff wanted to note as, as kind of being architecturally separate. Some of those things that separate this building from the rest is if you look at this bottom elevation here, they're showing additional gable ends around the entryways, covered porches for those sides of the building. Again, these are facing Hill Road. This concept plan is showing a sidewalk network that will connect the fronts of these units internally to the development, as well as to the Hill Road public sidewalk network. One of the things that our community plan, as well as other similar developments, has promoted is that with any project that is integrating an existing roadway to the development, that the units need to face outwards. So these three units are the most prominent in the development. So the applicant is showing that these ones will have a different architectural treatment facing outwards, while the rest, specifically on this side of that previous graphic, is showing there'll be some mounting and screening to screen the back of these units from Hill Road right-of-way. The clubhouse rendition is also down here in color, just to show the applicant's compatibility between the two units. With the unit design, the applicant, within the different building sizes ranging from two-unit, four-unit, and six-unit, they have the units designed on the inside from a floor plan perspective. The smallest is a one-bedroom unit, 875 square feet. The largest is a three-bedroom unit at a minimum of 1,235 square feet. The plan text describes there are acceptable external facade treatments ranging from brick, stone, wood, stucco, vinyl siding, fiber cement, and other materials of equal quality. Again, talking about the units that are facing Hill Road here, these three buildings, the applicant has three additional commitments to these three units that are not applicable or required for the rest of the buildings. The first is a masonry wainscot with a decorative sill. The development text notes one to eight inches above the finished floor. Staff believes that's a typo. When looking at the exhibits, it says one foot and eight inches, not one, two, eight inches of brick. So something just to mention. The development text in this case would take precedent over the exhibit. So it's just something staff would request to be cleaned up to match the exhibit, or else they'd only be required to do a one-inch brick ledge on the front of the building. The patio is consisting of vinyl rail decorative columns with gables, again, we talked about, would be on these three units. And then the windows would include shutter pairs and crosshead trim on the Hill Road side the applicant has committed to. Again, the plans show that is something on all the rest of the building designs as well, something we'll cover as we get into the architecture components specifically. The, again, the preliminary renderings, and I'll kind of run through them here, kind of quickly, they're hard to see on this big monitor, a little easier to see on your screen in front of you. But through the unit designs, the applicant has noted the different architectural treatments for siding. However, each one of the units that are, been proposed in this concept plan do show an intent for all vinyl siding across every building, and then does show, again, that masonry wainscot on the front elevation of each building. I apologize, it's easier to see in your paper packets to try to read some of these lines. The developments within the six-unit buildings specifically include a two-story component. So the center, two units of the six-unit buildings are elevated to have a second floor above the garage. Looking at the floor plans here, you can see they have a two-bed townhouse floor plan, as well as a three-bedroom townhouse floor plan. The main difference between the two is the two-bedroom does not have the projection over the garage for living space as the three-bedroom floor plan does. Again, it's a little hard to see in some of these 2D graphics, but this would be the two-bedroom floor plan for a townhouse. And then this is the three-bedroom with that projection that kind of goes out in front. These units for the staggering have not been determined, but you can see the six-unit buildings on the site plan. They kind of give you an idea of where they've anticipated placing those units within the complex to fit their site. Some of the things that staff in reviewing the architecture specifically for this development is the 2023 community plan references in light of specific multiple-family residential appearance standards being adopted by city council, that planning and zoning commission and city council should revert back to the residential appearance standards for architectural adhesiveness within the community. This is really geared towards having all new residential construction be compatible visually. So when looking at some of the elements, just on this one elevation here, the applicant is showing, again, the one-foot, eight-inch masonry wainscot on the front of the building. The residential appearance standards would require that to be 24 inches or two feet minimum on all sides of a building that had vinyl siding. The applicant is showing that only on the Hill Road elevation on the front and back, not the sides. The other elevations only on the front facing the private roadways. When looking at the window configuration here, the residential appearance standards talk about having shutters being appropriately sized for the windows. So if they actually closed, they would fit the window opening. In this example, they do not. Also require some operable shutter-looking hardware, like hinges, clips that hold the shutters back, basically making them look like they're real functioning shutters. With the residential appearance standards as well, it talks about limiting garage-forward design and promoting a residential pedestrian design to buildings. So these buildings do have a garage component that sticks out in front of the rest. The applicant does note on the graphics here that they're showing glass in the garage doors, which is consistent with the rest of the Green Gate development. All of the redwood apartments have glass in the doors. So do the Green Gate Cove homes. It's a requirement that those developers have done. Again, this graphic shows something similar, but the text does not reflect it to actually being committed. And then again, looking down at this other elevation here, you can see that the brick wainscot turns the corner and terminates on that vinyl sided elevation, doesn't carry through. You know, these are just some of the elements that staff had kind of pulled out that do not meet that intent of the community plans reference to the residential appearance standards. When looking at the signage package, staff notes that there's going to be two monument signs, one at each entryway. The applicant has put, you know, a concept here for a masonry-based sign, and that'll be, staff's assuming, externally illuminated by the graphic here. No details have been really provided at this time for what that totally encompasses. But that, staff did confirm with the applicant, this is not going to be the name of the development placeholder. So it's not going to be called Canal Winchester Village, making it confusing for anybody trying to figure out where they're going. When looking at these elements for permitted uses, roadway, parking, landscaping, open space, and architecture, staff compared these comments with the criteria for zoning approval up on the screen. The plan and exhibits for this rezoning, staff feels does not adequately cover all zoning deviations and does not provide justification for what amenities or compensation will be provided as part of the preliminary plan to offset the reduced standards. The applicant has identified only two deviations from the zoning code with their proposal. Staff in their review found an additional seven that had not been addressed by the applicant. So those can be found on page four and five of the staff report. When looking at these deviations, it needs to be stated clearly why the applicant, why this makes a better project to divert from what code minimum requirements are. Some of those items also relate to the community plan. The applicant is showing minimal pedestrian connectivity within the site and regionally, showing only a sidewalk on one side of the street. Again, a commitment for two sidewalk connections to Hill Road, which Hill Road is planning to be the long-term regional bicycle and pedestrian network, connecting this property to the rest of Violet Township through the CETA land use plan for transportation, multimodal transportation, would connect the site to the Myers property through Green Gate neighborhood, all the way to Diley Road, from Diley Road up to Pickington Metro Ponds, you know, long-term. So again, the connectivity component is a big feature in our community plan and that staff felt was lacking in this development. The preliminary development text also is not showing, painting a full picture for how the site plan will actually lay out in a final development plan stage. The preliminary plan is a concept plan, so what they're showing on these graphics is not committing to, this is what it'll actually look like. The text really focuses on how the units and site gets set up. One of the things staff noted was that the front yard setbacks for the internal streets was not mentioned. There was no indication on what that minimum depth needed to be, as well as the site plan shows an average 20-foot setback between the building and the roadway for the driveway depth. Staff is concerned, just that's a limited area for parking for residents. Actually, parking in a 20-foot-deep driveway would have your vehicle really close to your garage. garage without overhanging onto the road. So some of those things staff had noted with that connection point. When looking at the unit designs, again, we already talked about the community plan referencing the residential appearance standards should be applied to all three-plus unit-connected buildings. Again, some of those examples are the vinyl siding require additional design elements which have not been met. Some of the design elements that they are showing are incorrectly used, garage-forward design predominantly throughout the neighborhood, and then it's a non-pedestrian-oriented design as well. When comparing that to the four criteria up on the screen, again, staff's noting that the community plan promotes a higher-quality development for any multiple-family growth. Multiple-family growth is noted to be a use that is conceived on that future land use plan in the 2023 community plan. The site now is currently a multiple-family zoning with the assisted-living facility and the detached condo combination. So the change in this case would be increasing the density, so to speak, from those forty-four units to the one-hundred-and-twenty-two. One thing staff studied, the prior approvals, there is no density cap to the assisted-living facility, so it's just something to make note of that relates however it could be programmed, that's what it's currently zoned to do. When looking at this proposed amendment to traffic flow, utilities, thoroughfare plan and comprehensive plan, the applicant did not provide a feasibility statement for how the proposed utility services will serve the site. A traffic study was submitted for the two access drives into the site. The city's contracted engineers, E M H and T, noted the traffic study was complete. They didn't have any issues with what was submitted in terms of the context of it. That traffic study did note that no turn lanes or improvements were necessary when taking into account the existing improvements that would be taking place with the roundabout project to the south, the connection of Green Gate Boulevard to Diley in the future, and then the connection of Meyer Drive with the next out-parcies development. So some of those factors were taken into place. The township has not provided any comments on their section of the right-of-way improvements yet for this traffic study for staff's review. When looking at this proposed amendment to the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare, again, the preliminary development plan has identified two deviations. Staff had found seven additional unidentified deviations from the base zoning code without providing the justification for these deviations are necessary. The changes affect the public health, safety, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare. And that the proposed multiple-family growth, again, is noted as being appropriate in the community plan. The site has sanitary sewer stub to it, water is available on the opposing side of Hill Road. The applicant has provided a stormwater drainage plan showing how they'll take onsite drainage into account with this concept. So staff is recommending that zoning map amendment be tabled at this time, so the applicant can show the compatibility of this rezoning with the community plan relationship to pedestrian network and more clarity on how this plan increases the public health, prosperity, and general welfare. When looking at the preliminary development plan review, staff took a look at the six criteria in our code, found that the preliminary development plan is not consistent with the purpose, intent, and standards of the zoning code. Again, all the deviations have not been justified on how it will result in better quality development. The preliminary development plan is not in conformity with the community plan. The community plan notes that these projects should incorporate residential appearance standards for consistent growth. Additionally, increased pedestrian connectivity was rated as a high priority with the new developments and existing developments to help connect residents to existing parks, neighborhoods, and regional destinations. That the proposed development text does not adequately state building setbacks from internal streets or other minimum design standards for private roadways. The development text currently doesn't say how those internal roadways need to be designed other than the numbers that are on the conceptual drawing. Violet Township Fire Department has very specific standards for roadway configuration. Those standards can change depending if there's on-street parking or no-on-street parking permitted. City staff met with the CETA Land Use Committee last week to review this proposal. Those are some of the comments the fire department brought up, is just roadway spacing and width to make sure that this plan does not inhibit emergency services to the development. The fourth criteria, the preliminary development plan does not adequately identify or justify all modifications to the minimum development standards. Fifth, the preliminary development plan lacks pedestrian connectivity within the community plan. Again, building design is a big concern with this proposal here and how it doesn't match the residential appearance standards or the intent of them. And then the sixth, the preliminary development plan does provide a mix of unit designs. They range from one-bedroom to three-bedroom units. This plan also provides some vertical interest by having all six units feature a two-story design for the center. When working with the applicant on this proposal, the initial conversation was this is visually similar to the Redwood development, but different. This is kind of what makes it different, is that they have the two-story components. The Redwood development is all two-bedroom units. This is a mix from one to three, so there's a range in, you know, who would be living in this development, potentially by size and just the rents associated with different unit configurations. What makes it similar to Redwood is all the one-story buildings are all single-story, and then they all, every building has a two-story garage component. So that's kind of what makes the Redwood project kind of well-known, is how they've developed this product that is more age-targeted to older adults. The applicant has not provided any information in this application kind of what they're looking at for rentership. It's not required, but I know it's something that usually gets brought up by either this board or city council. So staff is recommending that the preliminary development plan also be tabled at this time. If there's any questions from the commission, I'll be glad to help answer. Advocants here to talk about their project with you guys as well, if you have questions for them.
So how long has city worked with this applicant on this?
We started conversations with this project late last summer. The applicant has gone through kind of several site iterations, basically changing access points after looking at the topography for the site, stormwater regs, different unit configurations. It started up with all one-story buildings and then became the hybrid with incorporating the two-story units. So it's been an evolving process with the applicant on the proposal to what you see today.
There's a lot of deviations here. Is this the best they could do to come to us as a starting point?
Yeah, I think that would be a question for the applicant. Again, this is something that when we were working with them on the submittal, they knew that they needed to file for the rezoning for a planned district. The planned district requirements was provided to them. We made it a point to talk about our residential appearance standards, how the unit designs are going to be really important to this development and how it really will set itself apart for the rezoning to match with the community plan that was adopted, I believe in January of twenty-four.
So when you say rezoning, you know, essentially rewriting the development text for this property, is that right?
Correct. So the property is currently zoned, planned residential district. Up on the screen is ordinance fifty-two zero-one zoning text and exhibits for that rezoning. This zoning that was done in two thousand and one, zoned this property for assisted-living or independent-living condominiums and assisted-living facility. So the property's already zoned this, and it's still active. Someone could come in tomorrow and file to build this. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property away from what's currently here to allow for the proposal up on the screen. Mainly, this proposal increases the number of units from forty-four to one-hundred-and-twenty-two, but also develops additional development standards. The existing zoning being valid, it does not have to meet any of our current regs. It is required to meet the zoning code from two thousand and one. So there's a lot of differences in what you can do with building design, landscaping. All those things have been intensified since two thousand and one. So this proposal is the applicant trying to meet today's standards with some modifications to have the increase in the density.
So if the current zoning is active, and they want to modify it, so this would still be a zoning map amendment change and then a recommendation to council for them to ultimately approve?
So...
But essentially, we're keeping the zoning the same. It'll still be PRD with just different zoning text.
Yes, the label PRD is the same, but the act of rezoning it is the preliminary plan. So to do a new preliminary plan requires the rezoning. If someone was to come through with a final development plan under this old concept, they can't do anything that increases density or changes the essential character of the project. So someone could come through and ask for a final plan to do thirty-nine detached dwelling units and a four-hundred-unit assisted-living facility, and that would meet the current zoning. This process is a full rezoning, even though the label for a PRD stays the same.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like it's as straightforward as I'm making it sound, but it's a whole new proposal on the same existing site.
Other questions for staff?
Has, have the schools been consulted? And I ask because there was a point in time when three-bedroom apartments were not in favor with the schools, so just didn't, didn't know if the schools have been consulted or not.
Yeah, staff does not know if the applicant has any, had any direct correspondence with the school district on this proposal or not.
And as far as the unit size, is the square footage of the, let's say, pick the Redwood development, roughly the same square footage size for the units, the same, same units?
No. So the Redwood development, their, so our zoning code requires, our current zoning code requires a thousand square feet for a one-bedroom, twelve-fifty for a two-bedroom, fifteen-hundred for a three-bedroom. The Redwood project is a part of the two thousand and one zoning code, which I believe is eight-fifty for one, a thousand for two, so it's, in two thousand and one, the unit sizes were smaller. The Redwood development, I believe, are all twelve-fifty to thirteen-fifty for all the two-bedroom units.
All the two-bedrooms, right.
I know some of the newer phases have like a screened-in porch that wasn't open patio before, so that adds additional square footage.
So, Mr. Morecliff, city's been working with them for the last six, seven months. Why do we have so many fundamental gaps in this application, you know, setbacks, unit design, you know, the non-pedestrian-oriented design? We've got the community plan that was adopted, you know, a year ago. There's a lot of incompleteness here that, you know, there's just not a whole lot to go off of, other than, you know, we've got seven deviations on one application and six on the other that are, that are all very fundamental things that we would normally see in an application like this.
Yeah, I would allow the applicant to kind of discuss what the proposal is for you guys this evening, because every time that we've worked with them, we've presented what the fundamentals needed to be for the submittal.
Okay.
And so this is the proposal that got filed for the application this evening.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Not at the moment.
The applicant, is the applicant present?
Yes.
So, sir, ten or fifteen minutes to get us up to speed here, I think, is all we need. But I would like to know where you stand on these deviations. We don't have to itemize them and go through them, but there's, like I said, there's a lot of fundamental things here that are just unknown that, you know, we're sitting here this evening, and some of this information is not, not in here, and I don't know what the conversations have been with staff over the last several months, but the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners, Andrew. Residents, my name is Craig Moncrief. I'm an attorney with the Plank Law Firm, here with Jason Kulik, who is with Stark Enterprises, who is affiliated with the applicant, a developer out of northeast Ohio. They've done developments all across the country. As a matter of, you know, updating as far as applications and such, we saw the staff report last week, put together revised documents, got that in on Friday. Understand that's not, you know, significant time, but wanted to make a good effort to address as many of the comments as we could, and I think we can with a lot of it. Certain things like engineering feasibility study, we included a note on the preliminary development plan, but understanding that there was something more, you know, letter-based, we prepared that or had our engineers prepare that. Same with the phasing plan, it's an apartment development, it's going to be, generally speaking, one phase, but kind of put more substance to that. And then certain architectural, other sorts of conditions, things like the glass in the garage door, you know, we can add that to the text, that's no problem. I think originally we had said two connections between the buildings near Hill Road and the sidewalk along Hill Road. We can update that to reflect the sidewalks near the two access points and get that up to five. That's really no problem. It's a matter of kind of working through that. Conceptual landscaping plan has been updated and provided, showing that it meets all standards, things like that. So, understanding probably not enough time to go through that new, new plan in depth today, but wanted to make sure that, you know, you understand. I think most of these items can be addressed fairly quickly and easily, and we're not looking to go against city staff's request or anything like that, it's just a matter of getting everything exactly in line with the text and making sure there's no, no issues there. But for some background, Andrew went into it well, but in two thousand and one, this was part of the Green Gate rezoning, which included three hundred acres, of which about a hundred and ninety-eight was zoned planned residential, including the Redwood development, the Ryan Homes development, and then also Buzy Road Park. You know, a twenty-four-year-old zoning text can be a little tricky, there's really not too much to it. The idea here being that rezoning it, I understand it's a bit odd going from PRD to PRD, but I think there's benefits here as far as, one, the city has updated landscaping standards, architectural standards, things like that, so that brings them into play, while also making a more site-specific zoning text that's kind of clear what is required for this property as opposed to two hundred acres in general. So that's the idea of what we're looking to do. Like Andrew said, this is currently vacant agricultural land. There's tree buffers to the east and to the south. The idea here is to put forth the development that is in line with the goals of the comprehensive plan and something that's not intense, I'll say, and by that I mean meeting the front yard setbacks, meeting and exceeding side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks, meeting and exceeding height standards, and then also open space standards going beyond open space standards, while also being able to maintain the tree buffer that is there to buffer this property and screen this property from the residents to the east and north, and even the, what I assume will be a future industrial development to the south. Parking is plentiful on this property, to be honest. Code requires two hundred and forty-four spaces based on the proposed one-hundred-and-twenty-two units. We are providing four hundred and twenty-one spaces, including two-car garages, driveways, and then also off-street but onsite parking, including around the clubhouse and throughout the site. An additional benefit to that is that there won't be any on-street parking, which I believe the fire department was pleased with. The internal roads will be all private, owned and maintained by the development company. The internal roads will be all private, owned and maintained by the development company. Like I said before, the open space requirement is being exceeded right now, even though Bucy Road Park was dedicated as part of the two thousand and one plan, really to serve as the open space for this entire area. Code requires a minimum of twenty percent, this project will commit to a minimum of thirty percent. No problem with committing to a specific internal road setback, I think we had talked about twenty-one feet with Andrew, that way there's enough room with, for a parking space, maybe a little bit extra room, that way there's no concerns with that. Looking to incorporate as much of a pedestrian-friendly, walkable identity to this neighborhood. You know, one thing we've talked to Andrew about was the pedestrian connections, the sidewalk connections, there'll be a sidewalk running throughout the site, it will connect with the Hill Road sidewalk, which the client will be installing along the entire frontage of Hill Road. As we said, we're willing to commit to five different connections, that way any resident has no problem getting to the public infrastructure. Also sidewalks around the retention pond, additional residential amenities being clubhouse, pool, you know, gym, things like that, something to, to make this a, a true apartment complex for the residents that are living there. Like I said, it meets and exceeds, and by exceeds height requirements, I mean it doesn't get up to the thirty-foot maximum. This will be mostly one-story buildings, some of the six-unit buildings will have a limited second story, basically the middle two units, with the idea being that, kind of similar to Redwood, it's not intense from a height perspective. Going back to some of the more walkable, pedestrian-friendly aspects of this development, worked with staff to include certain architectural standards for the rear of the three buildings that will face Hill Road. Yeah, with the internal streets, these all front internally, but the idea being that, hey, anybody who drives down or walks down Hill Road will look at this development and see what appears from an architectural standard to look more like a front yard commitments as far as the Wayne Scott, as far as the porch and things like that, something to incorporate more architectural, architectural elements to that. So those are some of the things we've worked on. As far as architectural standards go, we've updated it with our latest submittal on Friday. I think one kind of creative solution that the applicant proposed was this matrix, kind of looks more like a table as far as laying out. You have section eleven ninety-eight of the zoning code, which goes into residential appearance standards. Those are generally geared more towards one or two-unit, three-unit developments, but we're looking to incorporate as much of that as we can and meet the, pretty much all of the criteria. What the table will reflect is the four-sided architectural requirements as far as there's, I believe, six or seven criteria, the idea is to meet a certain amount for the front, certain amount for the rear and sides of the buildings, the idea is that that will show, and it'll be part of the zoning text that commits to, hey, this will be, you know, these three elements will be on these buildings, these four elements will be on the side, the front, the rear, things like that, that way it's a hundred percent clear as far as what will be added to that, and that's, you know, this is another section where in two thousand and one, this was not included as part of the zoning text, but we're happy to commit to as much as that as we can as part of, as part of this development to make it a, a, a good-looking development and one that, that the city can be proud of. You know, like I said before, went into the vinyl-sided elements, happy to add the glass windows to garage door elements, things like that, added the phasing plan. And as far as comprehensive plan, it does recommend multifamily residential for this property, there's references to internal street networks, and as far as access to main roads, originally this plan had one access to Hill Road with a secondary emergency access. We've since revised that to have two main access points. In addition, a traffic study was done based on those two accesses, which said that no mitigation was required as part of this development. Meets all the spacing setback and height suggestions in the comprehensive plan. Like I said, we're looking to incorporate those residential appearance standards, looking to get a, you know, more clarified matrix before you that really gets into how each, not only each building, but each side of the building meets these standards and different spacing and things like that. As just a general summary, you know, as supporting this, we believe this is a reasonable, not intense development, meets all the setback standards, meets the open space standards, gonna keep the tree line there, going to keep the buffers and screening there, and this is a density that makes sense for this type of development. It also meets the goals of, in two thousand and one, when they had laid out how this a hundred and ninety-eight acres would look like when it was all said and done, coming in at four units per acre, this meets that as well. So nothing out of the ordinary or unexpected, and something that meets the standards of the current zoning code. Like I said, I apologize for any confusion with the feasibility plans and things like that, but we're happy to get that to you and, and make sure that everything's buttoned up for you. You know, this is, right now this property is in CAUV, this is not the type of development that would incorporate a ton of schoolchildren or anything like that, so it'll be a property tax boost. And as you can see, kind of looking through maps, there's a pretty strong east-west line here between, you've got this area with residential, Green Gate to the northwest, and then directly south, you've got properties zoned for manufacturing, both inside and outside of the city, so this could be, help support housing for what I'll call your economic engine with all the road improvements and commercial zoning out there. So with that, Jason's here as well, we're happy to answer any questions, happy to wait until public comments, comments to address any questions, but thank you for your time.
Are you okay tabling this evening?
Yes.
So do you feel that these deviations, we have solutions to all of these deviations if we come back, you know, on the preliminary development plan and the zoning change?
Yeah, I mean, I saw, we, we had a couple deviations requested, things like density, which I think would be, that's not atypical to what Redwood's density is, or the Ryan Homes development, or really any sort of apartment development, but as far as things like the phasing plan and the feasibility plan, I mean, all of that has been provided, that's no problem. Adding some of the architectural elements discussed, like the garage door, things like that, that's no problem, and the pedestrian connectivity, that was discussed, that's no problem. So yeah, I think we can get just about all of those taken care of.
What other questions for the applicant or comments?
I, I don't mind stepping up first. When I was looking at the site plan for the units that will front onto Hill Road, it appeared that the porches were going to encroach in the side, in the setback, is that true?
I believe there's language in there that says the porches can encroach a few feet, but I'll, I'll take a look into that to make sure there's no issues.
It seemed significant, that's, it just looked like that to me. I also wanted to point out that you had said that the properties along Hill, anything that fronts on Hill Road would have that additional architectural feature with the knee walls and some additional things, but when I look at this plan, there's actually a lot more than just this smaller section. So there's the houses that will actually front on the detention, is that a detention or retention pond?
I believe it's...
It'd be a wet-based.
Wet-based?
Wet-based.
Okay. So those are going to be fronting onto Hill Road, and then if you go to the other side where the clubhouse is, there are several units that are going to front on hillside as well. So one of the concerns that I had as far as residential standards is that you are going to make changes to make it aesthetically pleasing if you're driving down Hill Road and looking at those units, but not the rest of it. And I guess I was wondering why we wouldn't have those same architectural features throughout the entire, the entire development, so that when you drive through there, it does have a residential feel to it and not this and then that, because that's kind of how I was looking at it.
Yeah, sure. So the idea is that this will all meet the architectural requirements under, every, every building will meet the architectural requirements under eleven ninety-eight being add articulation to, you know, front, side, and rear. Just specifically, we talked about how to make those rears, rear yards look more almost like front yards and have specific type of interplay since it will be facing Hill Road, whereas the others will be kind of more traditional, I'd say, rear yards. But we can look into as far as at least the retention pond units and things like that, and then kind of go through what the other requirements will be for the other buildings, but the idea will be that they will meet the standards under eleven ninety-eight, all of them.
So one of the standards that I read was that no two units, if you had a single-family home or you had condominiums, would look the same. But when I looked at the drawings, it looked like they were all going to be the same, and even though in the text it said you would have these various materials on the building, it looked like it was all going to be vinyl.
Yeah, I believe vinyl material, more a matter of articulation, color, things like that, mixing in four and six-unit buildings and two-unit buildings. Jason, anything else as far as...
Come on up if you could, just so we can capture it on the mic for the minutes, thank you.
Yeah, no, Craig is, Jason, Stark Enterprises, Craig is correct, so we felt that by changing color, by changing unit, unit type, we felt that we were meeting those, those residential appearance standards of, of differing facades.
So, so it says that from brick, stone, wood, stucco, vinyl siding, cement fiber, but you're really only just going to use vinyl?
All the buildings will have vinyl, but they will all also have stone or, or brick at the bottom as well.
Have you identified what gauge of vinyl you're going to use?
Uh, not, not at this point, no.
Okay.
I can make a note to, to get that information.
Sure. The thirty percent for the open space, are you including the retention pond with that?
Yes.
And does the city allow the retention pond to be added into the thirty percent?
We've allowed onsite retention to be part of the calculation as long as it is integrated into the development in a manner where the residents can use it.
Okay.
And this, in this case, the applicant is showing a sidewalk path around the perimeter of that basin. You know, typically this can be as simple as that, or be dressed up with seating areas, you know, sheltered areas. You know, in this instance, the only connection to the basin is, is in this quadrant, unless you're in one of these units that back up directly to it. I mean, in other projects, there's been a pathway system that kind of leads through green space to, to take you there from, you know, further end of the development. A lot of those pedestrian connections are kind of what staff identified is, is very minimalistic in this, this proposal.
Okay. I think that was my last question, thank you very much.
I think I'd agree with Ms. McDonald, they look like just a long row, like a, like a pole barn, which is some variations on it, so I would, I would agree, I think some variations within the units would be, would be very helpful. That's probably one, the, one of the biggest things I have with some of the other developments we have, it's a single-story, they just look like they're one large thing, so agree with that. And yes, there maybe could be more connectivity to the, the walkway around the basin, and I find it peculiar the way the sidewalk is on one side of the road. I mean, if you look at some of the walking patterns around here, you're great if you're on like one side of the loop, the other side of the loop, you always have to go across the street to get to the sidewalk. So, does the city have any statements about how close the sidewalk can be to the street? Because I thought there's usually some separation there, like there was a...
These are private roadways, so...
I see.
That's what makes the difference.
Got it.
Is that it's not a publicly maintained roadway.
Yeah. I think, I think a sidewalk on, on all of the streets would be certainly worthwhile. And yet, then, and then it goes back to the comment about the twenty-foot driveway, how many times you go walking and there are cars on the sidewalk, you end up having to walk around, and so it's, it's being so close there, I think is, is a bit of a concern as And does the city consider a garage space a parking space?
Our parking standards for multiple family require two spaces for each unit, and a minimum of one has to be in a garage. So in this case, the applicant is showing two in a garage plus two outside of the garage.
Plus the few extras that you have scattered along there.
I think I heard you say no on-street parking.
That's correct.
In the entire...
That's correct. Yeah, and we do enforce that, we do have parking passes for all residents, and visitors are supposed to have their own parking pass as well.
So if you, if you have some people over for Super Bowl party...
Call ahead.
I'm guessing...
Understood, that's, that's, understood, that's, that could be difficult, but yeah.
I, I know the, it's not much of our, our responsibility, but how large is the pool going to be?
Um, you know, I do not know the dimensions off the top of my head, it's going to be smaller than your typical Olympic-sized pool.
Right, yeah.
I can get that information for you.
It's, it's usually, it's just you, because when we have these discussions about the amenities that are provided in an apartment complex, it usually takes three to four hundred units to have significant amenity, amenities, so to provide those there, I just was curious what the size was, so. Otherwise, I think I'm done for the moment.
I think I have another question, if I, if I may. You had mentioned the Bike Way project coming through here, is that going to be on this side of the road or on the other side of the road?
So the city lane use plan has a sidewalk on this side of the development, and then the multi-use path on the west side, the Green Gate Cove side of the development, the frontage of Green Gate Cove, right here along Hill Road has the path installed. That plan shows it continuing south across, let me skip back a little slides here. So once it continues past these couple large lot homes in the township, this large piece that's, the agricultural field directly behind Meyer is one parcel, so whoever develops on that would connect it down to Meyer Drive.
Okay.
And then Meyer Drive is slated to be connected to Hill Road with the next out parcel development, and when that takes place, the path from McDonald's will loop all the way up through Meyer Drive.
Okay.
So there are some really big chunks that will happen at once when the next Meyer Outlet gets done, the rest of the infill on this side would be up to the township.
Okay.
They'll probably stage it with like a roadway project in the future.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if it was going to be on this side of the road, that we would want some sort of dedicated right-of-way in there so that that bike path could be built.
Yeah, with this project, there is additional right-of-way that's needed.
Okay.
And so the applicant does have that noted on their plan, they, I believe it's thirty-five feet from the center line.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So since we are tabling this evening, I will not open it up for public hearing, there's still some work to be done on these applications, and I think when the applicant comes back and has some of the things that we discussed tonight and staff's reviewed, you know, it'd be a, kind of a more complete presentation that we can have a discussion on with the public, so we will table the public hearing on these applications until we come back for a final vote in the next month or two.
So, Mr. Chair, just a clarification, we typically have a single public hearing for rezoning effort, we don't, we don't have multiples, right?
Right.
So that's, that's kind of why we're saving it for next time, doing what people think we were trying to shut anyone down, just...
Yep, and there, you know, there will be a public hearing on the preliminary development plan as well. Will they get letters?
Do we get notifications?
Yes, yeah, a notice, a notice will be sent out with the next being, the public hearing on the agenda.
Okay.
You guys don't at least want to hear what the residents have to say?
We, 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 sir, we will, we will, when we hold the public hearing, when we have a full application to vote on.
Okay, I understand, I'm, we're directly affected in the water.
Yep, I, I understand, sir, I understand, yep, you'll be notified. So, so two applications tonight will be tabled, ZM twenty-five oh one, and then the preliminary So, so two applications tonight will be tabled, ZM 25001, and then the preliminary development plan. So I'll need a motion on those, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we table zoning matters ZM-25-001 and preliminary site development plan PDP-25-001.
Okay, so let's take a vote on ZM 25001 to be tabled. That motion was made by Mr. Deeds. Second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.
Okay, so ZM 25001 has been tabled, and we have a motion on the floor to table PDP 25001 by Mr. Deeds.
Second.
Second by Ms. McDonald. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
And Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.
Okay, so both applications at this time are on the table.
When looking at old and new business, staff is working with a couple tentative projects for the next month's agenda. Right now, looking at possibly two commercial developments, one along Gender Road, one along Dialy Road, as well as another, I think, maybe a variance, if I'm remembering correctly, application that may become for you guys. So once those get filed, you'll be notified for that, the packet. As the applicant noted this evening, and they, I did receive an email Friday with some additional changes based off my staff report to this, so we'll be reviewing those changes, updating the staff report for you guys for the March agenda. Other news, the zoning code steering committee has the first meeting scheduled for Wednesday this week. So thank you, Deborah and Rick, for volunteering your time to be on that. This will be the, kind of the first step in staging on figuring out the goals for the committee, looking ahead on future meeting dates, kind of what to prepare those members for and what we'll be reviewing. City Council has finalized that committee. It'll consist of two council members, two planning zoning members, one landmarks per member, landmarks member, a member of the chamber, a member of the CWICC, and then three staff plus the mayor. So you, good, healthy group, a lot of knowledge in that room. Excited to get that process started. Don't expect, you know, to hear updates all the time from it. I plan it'll probably take 12 to 18 months, you know, before it goes to council for adoption. So you guys, as a planning zoning commission, may see it in like month 12 to 14, you know, as the, the draft public hearing. So just kind of keep that on the radar in the future. But that would be to rewrite the entire entirety of the zoning code based off the 2023 community plan. Don't really have a whole lot else for old and new business. I'm just kind of preparing for the next months ahead. Do you have anything for me? Glad to help answer.
I'd like to speak to my neighbors if anybody wants to listen to me.
Any new business?
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second?
Excuse me, sir.
When we're done adjourning?
Oh, whatever. I mean.
Excuse me, sir. Please, please. Thank you. Motion made by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Pauls Grove. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilenthaler?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Deeds?
Yes.
And Mr. Pauls Grove?
Yes.
Great.
I will say that.